Great time. We have been led by Councilwoman Elaine Reed.
With all hearts and minds clear, let's go before the Lord. Dear Father in the name of your son Jesus Christ, I come to you this evening asking you to be a part of all of the decisions, things that we make. Please be here so that everything that we vote on, discuss, have due interments and that all of the decisions is for the betterment of our city of Darlington. These I ask in the name of your son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, please. Pledge. Pledge and lead us to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two amendments to approve. We have approved on July 10th, the special council meeting and August 7th, we approve the July 10th petition, not in motion.
All motion that we approve the minutes of the July 10th, 2018 specials council meeting.
I second. Is the motion a second that we approve, Mr. July 10th, any question? All in favor, let me know in the sign of "I." Mayors have a same right, motion carried. The August 7th meeting?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the August 7th council meeting.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, we received the August 7th meeting, all in favor, let me know in the sign of "I." Mayors have a same right, I forgot, is there a question? Okay, motion carried. Okay, approve the meeting agenda, August 15th. Okay, I've got two, okay, number, August 15th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of our meeting of August 15th, 2018.
I'll second that.
Any questions? It's been properly moved and the motion is seconded, we received the August 15th meeting, all in favor, let me know in the sign of "I." Mayors have a same right, motion carried. For approval of the meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, we received the agenda, all in, no question?
Yes, I have a question. I questioned it because I wasn't aware of it. And I thought I was properly informed of the agenda. The only one that I received was in the mail, was probably about a week ago. And I didn't, I'm not aware of any other way that we receive our agenda without approval. So I do have a question about it.
Mr. Gunn, after you changed it, did you send a agenda out to the council members?
Yes, ma'am, I sent it by email.
Okay, you didn't send it out like you sent it out by mail. You just sent a police to offer to our houses and give us a copy in the mail?
I notified each council member by text and then I sent an email of the amended agenda.
Where did they get it?
No, I didn't get an amended, I did get a text saying that there was a proposed of issues to put on there. I responded to that. I didn't get an amended agenda. I did get that text, but that wasn't an amended agenda. It was telling us of what was being proposed.
That's what I got also. Anybody else?
And for the two years that I have served, the only way that I have received of the agenda, even at the last minute, has been by the officers, delivered or mailed. Some though I wouldn't have even thought to look at. I got over a thousand emails in there right now.
Mr. Gunn?
I don't think this is fair.
Actually, as I said a few months ago, I sent out a text advising council members that there was an amended agenda coming and I sent it out to your representative.
Well, in the past you have sent it by mail, what stopped that? If there was a change, you would be going out in the mail?
As I just stated, I sent it out by text, I sent it out by email.
But I asked another question. I asked, why didn't you send it out like you've been sending it out? By the police officer bringing it to the house?
I sent.
May I?
I'm asking this garden question, not you, I'll get you in ten minutes.
All right.
I sent out my text, I sent it by email. That's how I sent it.
But from now, police sent it by mail also. Like you've been doing. Now...
Just for clarity, just for clarity to the public, I'm looking at a March 2018 council agenda amendment from...
Mr. Speak louder, please.
I'm looking at a March 2018 council agenda amended, council agenda, and it's from March 5th, 2018. I just happened to scan down my email just to find another amended agenda. Something I think we do kind of regularly through email. And I apologize.
But the amended one came in the mail also, it came this week?
Sometimes we do get them in the mail, but we've had plenty of amended agendas that we just got by email. It happened a couple times.
Then by email, I would have gotten the majority responses? So that I would know that the majority agreed to that? Because I truly didn't see that.
Previous council sessions, we've had council...
I'm asking Howard, please, please.
Mr. Gunn?
I'm sure I understood the question.
I'm saying that you said you had the majority of council, I said I did not. I didn't, first, I didn't see the agenda, the amended agenda, and I have not seen the responses that would show me that poor people...
I had to go back and look for my emails and texts.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, we're here with none of that being...
I'm going to make a motion that we approve for tonight's meeting, the amended agenda. I'll second that.
Speak up, Councilman, you said one thing, you made a motion, we accept, that's all you said?
Yes, ma'am, I said I made a motion that we approve and accept for tonight's meeting, the amended agenda that was sent out by email. Wish that everybody had gotten a copy of it, but it appears that six out of seven got a copy of it. I did not respond because I didn't see any problem with the amended agenda. But we've got to do something tonight, so it was publicized, it's been presented to the press, so I would make a motion that we go ahead and adopt it and handle the issues that are on the amended agenda.
Oh, and... When he has looked on the floor, is anybody accepted or...
I think Mr. Gunn is seconded.
The question?
I saw that. That didn't say it was the amended agenda, that was the proposed issue to me. That was the proposed issue, it didn't say. And all I'm still saying is that, as far back as that was, why not send it out like you normally have? Even the one that Bryant is talking about, that was in the email, I got a paper, I got it in the mail, it was delivered. This would have been the very first time, that's why I'm questioning, it was not done as you normally would do things. And it just indicates that we, as a city council person, at least give us that respect. It's what, I mean, we have the resources out of the bill, why not follow?
Mr. Gunn?
A reminder for council and mayor, we're going to iPads in October, so we're going to paperless meeting agendas and meeting packets, so we will have to take...
And we don't have either. We're not there.
I...
No question.
It's properly...
I'd like to propose that we do our original one, going to be our...
It's been properly, our motion is seconded, that we approve the meeting agenda, all in favor? Let me know in the sign of "I." Mayors have a same right?
Amen.
Three nays, raise your hand up, nays. Motion carried. I was happy before you standing created to be there. Jesus. Mr. Lisa Rock?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We had a wonderful, successful race weekend and alumni weekend. I think everybody in town is enjoying it, but is tired now. The DDRA finished up its successful Bring Downtown Live concert season on Friday as part of Race Week. Businesses downtown, especially the restaurants, reported they had lots of customers and music really livened up the downtown area. We had a great turnout on August 9th for the community karaoke party sponsored by Medica South Carolina and during Race Week at the August 31st concert by Radio 5. Thank you to the Darlington Lions Club, Darlington Kiwanis Club, and Rotary Club of Darlington for staffing these events. Special thanks to Pepsia Florence, Wilson Senior Care, Fast Track Convenience Stores, the Darlington Rescue Squad, M&amp;M Printing, Bell Funeral Home, Kissler Party Funeral Home, Dr. and Mrs. Alex Cohen, Andrews and Bryant, as well as the City of Darlington Fire, Police, Street Sanitation, and Recreation Departments for their assistance with these concerts. Anyone who's interested in helping with these concerts should contact my office. We will be setting the schedule and searching for bands, sponsors, and vendors for the 2019 season. The next organizational meeting will be announced by the end of the month, so please have interested groups or individuals contact me as soon as possible to be added to our committee email list. We are also inviting businesses to network and learn about the DDRA programs and give feedback for future projects at our monthly members breakfast, which the mayor and Ms. Backus both attended, Ms. Reed attended this last month. The next event is 8:00 a.m. Wednesday, September 26th, at Taki's Diner. Breakfast is provided for member businesses at no charge and a small donation of $5 to go toward the meal for non-members. These meetings will continue through the month of October. And next up, our next big event is going to be in October. Costume children are invited to descend upon the public square on Thursday, October 25th, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. as the DDRA partners with Darlington Recreation for Scare on the Square. This has grown in the last three years from 800 children to probably over 1,200 children come decked out in their costumes and go business to business trick or treating. As well as on the square itself, we have churches, civic groups, and other businesses that aren't on the square are invited to come and set up a table or booth and hand out treats to the children. Any of those groups who are not located on the square that want to join in just need to contact my office to register for a booth by October 15th so we can make sure we have room for everyone.
Registration's free, right?
Yeah, if you are a city business, if you are within the city limits or you have your city business license, it's free, it's a nonprofit, it's free, school's are free. It's just if you're a city, if you're outside the city and don't have a city business license, that there would be a small $25 fee. We're not trying to make money, we want everybody to participate. It'd be nice to have one big trick or treat event instead of a ton of different trumpet riffs. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sarah Rock?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, this Thursday, we're having the tailgate again on Public Square, begins at 6:00. I thought we were going to have to cancel it, but we're not. Darlington High School, I called them, told them had to push and prod and do a little shaming, and they're coming. The band had us on the calendar, football team did not, it's just miscommunications with N-Darlington High. The whole band might not be there, but the drum line will be there, cheerleaders will be there. Coach Jordan said he will have all of the athletic teams there except for the volleyball team because they have a game. So you can come out and meet all of your student athletes. Hot dogs will be sold, cupcakes will be sold. Cheerleaders are going to be leading the pep rally. It ought to be a fun time, but remember the real reason we're doing this. Is to bring the community out and to raise canned goods when the Lord cares. They're saying it's going to be a very, very cold winter, and we're going to have some hungry people in Darlington. We need to make sure they're fed and they have access to food. The Darlington High School Alumni Association is going to be there, and they've already started collecting canned goods, which we're very excited about. Quetta McNeil, she works for Genesis Health here, I've known her since she was a child. We're going to go around to the businesses in the square and see if they'll decorate their store windows for the month of September. The new athletic director found the old flags, it's going to look like the Dirty Birds logo. We're going to see if we can get those put around the square and get some school spirit going for the month of September, see if maybe Howard would let us keep them up for September. Then, the 27th is Thursday. The Alumni Association has changed their meet and greet date, and Quetta is filling out all the paperwork to get the grade permit, get the courthouse grounds, and we are going to do the Alumni Association meet and greet downtown. We're going to feed the players on Thursday night, and there's going to be some surprises. If you're a fan of the Clemson Carolina rivalry, you might find some similarities going on that night. Maybe a little funerals for Wilson, maybe something like that. We'll just have to see what can happen. But we just need to get some spirit going on for Darlington. And we've got an award-winning band, we just need to get the community to rally around. You know, it's amazing what a community can do for the boys. You know, they're out there playing their hearts out, but let's get behind them. So we're going to have a huge pep rally that night. The Alumni Association will be there in full force. It will be a family function. There will be no alcohol or beverages sold, we'll be sweet tea and lemonade. That's all we're doing. Yes, sir. 6:00. Now, the boys will probably be fed a little bit earlier because they have to go to bed. They have to, they have school the next day, even though they are 17 and 18, they have a game to play the next night. And the coaches want them back home. So that's a big pep rally on the 27th downtown. Hopefully, we'll be able to do some marching around squares and cheering, get some spirit going on. Toast of Darlington is scheduled for October the 4th. We have a lot of cooks, we need some more sponsors. If anybody would like to fill out an application for sponsorship or a cooks' application, we would love to take one. And we've got three additional events going on. We're going to have another lunch and learn. The new executive director for the Coastal Conservancy, Lee, contacted me, and I think we are going to have her on September the 13th for a lunch and learn and do a lunch and learn with the Rotary and Kiwanis, which should be a very interesting meeting. We're going to have a flu shot clinic, September 20th, at the Darlington Chamber. And we have two other events that will be coming up.
When is the flu shot?
September 20th. I will have, hopefully, at least 25 to 50 free vouchers. So if you do not have insurance, please do not let that keep you in the flu shot. They say it's going to be a bad flu season, and we do not want our young or our old to end up with flu.
How much is it after you run out of vouchers?
I'm going to try not to run out of vouchers. Because the more people that come and get their flu shot with commercial insurance, Medicaid, or Medicare, I get more vouchers. So the more people we have to get their flu shot, the more free vouchers we get. So I've got a deal going on with all of us.
Did you give us a copy of all that stuff?
It's on, it's on our Darlington, Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce Facebook page and website, but I can get you copies of all those files.
Can you get that information out again? There was some conversation over the weekend, which is good conversation, citizens talking about all the activity that's going in the city, but it's not getting out to the masses.
Yeah, and I had all that posted on my Facebook page, and I just think people don't know to go to the chamber. And I had commented on that. I really want a large cork board, half cork, half write-on wipe-off. I'm not a good person to make such a thing. And I want it on wheels, on casters, so at night I can roll it in, put it in front of one of my big windows, so people walking can still see it. I don't want to nail it to my building because it's historic, but as long as I can wheel it out during the day, bring it in at night, and put it in front of my window, I'm right on the corner, I'm in a perfect spot. So I just need to find somebody who can build, and it wouldn't cost a lot. I could just take a regular dime store cork board. I beg your pardon?
I text you earlier, you have four weeks, excuse me, I'm talking now.
You're not allowed to talk out like that.
So I think our problem might be solved.
Thank you.
Thank you, any questions?
We have a new system where you can text and email out citizens who signed up. Could you send like a list of that information so we can get it on our city website as well?
I've got flyers, and they're in PNG and PDF, and all I have to do is just sing them.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Bush, District 4 Council. Rose Pruitt, Mr. Dunn Drain.
I'm here, some of you may remember me, I think I had long good deals the last round, but you should still recognize me. I have the stormwater issue over on West Broad Street, and I'm here tonight to thank you, each and every one of you, for making an attempt to, I feel like, to really get a hold of the stormwater issues in Darlington, because clearly I'm not the only location that has those issues. And that fine new back truck that you've got is doing a really good job. Of course, we haven't had rain in four weeks, so we won't know whether it's, how much it's held, but we're hopeful. But I also wanted to remind you that, you know, clearly we've had, you know, 100 years of neglected stormwater systems, so it's really going to take an effort to clear that out because it is one big interconnected system. And I know at my location, they ran into some issues, you know, they clear out 20 feet and then it would be totally blocked. So there probably are going to be some requests before too long, if they haven't come already, for additional equipment for that truck to maybe help bore out some of that material, and I hope that you'll, I hope that you'll look favorfully on that. But again, I'm really here tonight to thank y'all for making that effort, and I appreciate it.
The stormwater has never been addressed in the city of Darlington as long as I've been on council until about six years ago. I mean, we had some infrastructure, but the stormwater has never been addressed.
Well, I think it's...
We're doing it now, you know.
And it's going to take some time. I know, I know it seemed like they were out in front of my house for that one drain for like three days.
I know it.
And it still probably isn't open yet, it'll hold a little bit more water, but you know, but I'm happy to see.
Got to hold that debris out, it's over inside the fire on the...
They did, they really did. So hopefully, we'll find the rest of it. We'll all see. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Mr. Thomas Bradley, grass and trash pickup?
Hey, how you doing today? I might be speaking out of turn about a little protocol about this, but I seen something come across my computer about the grass situation, being over 14 inches younger, paying people $500 because they don't get the grass cut. I look on my street, I live on Law Street, which is one block over from this main Pearl Street, and there's sofas, beds, a buggy from Dollar General, Pigley Wiggins, grass that's going into the road, and I need, I think I need to take care of the streets and everything, we worry about somebody else's grass. Paying $500, getting, I think you was contacted yesterday evening about this. I didn't know there was a public page that you were going to flank, but I think we need to address the trash pickup in people's yards and on the sides of streets. Like I said, I live two blocks from the city trash works. They come by every Friday, supposed to. There's sofas and cardboard boxes, vans, all the ones side of my street, it's been there for two months. And, I mean, Ray Charles won't be able to see us out there, and you have people sitting right there, right by there, and two blocks from there. I shouldn't have to call up here every time and say, hey, there's a sofa on the side of the street, hey, there's a buggy side of the street. I shouldn't have to come and say that when they live two blocks from there. And that's really the whole thing, the grass, I think, need to take care of all the streets. And then, just like I go on the highway, one time the grass gets cut out there is when the races come. And then when the people get out there and start cutting it, they run over the trash and make it 10 times bad. They need to pick the trash up 40 to cut the grass. And I don't know what happens to the workers at prison farm, they'd love to get out and get up there and get out for a day or so. That's all, that's all I have to say. All right, thank you.
Everybody got a flyer in the water bill today? Did you see the flyer, state water bill? A new flyer that came out of furniture, said it has not picked up furniture. Mr. Rock, do you have one with you?
I do not have one with me.
Do you have one with you?
But I do have, Mayor, now, in the water bill, one of the things that is mentioned is the C Click Fix App, and it's also on our city website where you can report issues. It'll, if you're on your smartphone, you can take a picture, it'll have your location, and you can directly report those to the city, and it'll go directly to the correct department so that that issue can be taken care of. When you go on the website, you'll be able to see different issues that other people may have noticed, so if you see something broken, take a picture of it or go to do it, it'll show you, oh, well, they've already acknowledged it, it's on the list to get taken care of, or whatever the status of that fix is going to be. So that's something that's, it's live now, so if you do want to download it on your phone, Apple or Android, or you can do it through the website, either way. So just another way to get everybody engaged on a regular basis.
The living city of Darlington is on your, it's came in your water bill. My water bill came today, and it seems that it shows you just what you're saying about the after what to do now, so you can make your complaints. Ms. Reed, you have something to say?
Oh, I just wanted, so we are going to pick it up now, we are going to pick it up. I had another one of them.
No, not picking it up.
Okay, so that's...
That's what I said, read it, it's a sheet in your water bill.
I'm trying to help you. I'm one of those that, I had another one of mine. You were, you were in my district, and today, another one, I know you know who we called the mayor of West End here, Mr. Simon. And I rode all the way through, we got Law Street, we, we, even all of the new stuff that, I mean, the, the, the people moving in on Pearl Street, all around. And I have a list right now that I'm trying to get them. I know they're, they're saying this, I'm one to, I'm busted, they don't even wanna see me coming. Because, what is it? If we're not gonna pick it up, how we gonna do it? And so I'm trying to get some, some of my neighborhoods of folk that will help us. Some of the guys that'll help us to kinda clean up. Because in this area, in our area, we want to, it is a true problem. From Syracuse to Lula, coming down Washington Street, the all mill, when they bringing all that stuff in, the cotton is on both sides, we can't get nobody to clean it up. I'm complaining all the time. So I appreciate, I really thank you for coming in, one of the, the resident, to say that. I need some backup. 'Cause we gotta be able to do something here. So then my only way right now, I've been even getting my son here, we can pick up some of it, just to help, if it's to make the area look so much better.
I've got no interest in doing a habitual, um, offender fine, the five hundred dollars that you mentioned, um, for people who's got fifteen inches of grass. It's for the people who are throwing their couches every other month on the side of your road. Um, those are the kinda people we wanna go after. People who own property all over the city and who aren't keeping them up, um, just kinda deteriorating. That's what we're really trying to go after. And also, um, alleviate our building inspectors, having to go back to the same issue time and time again. So, uh, um, hope you understand, that we got no interest in going in and patrolling the neighborhoods and seeing who's cutting their grass and who's not, unless it's a real big issue for the whole city. But I've definitely, um, got those emails and have talked to Alex about one of the issues and be looking into the other one as well.
Any other comments? We want to get your problem solved, sir.
Well, this is my problem. It's the Darlington's problem.
It's the, it's the Darlington's, it's the Darlington's problem. It's the door for a long time. People buy property all over the city and don't respect it. They don't go out and they don't cut. They know they got to cut the grass, and the city had to send them letters over and over again. Those are the ones that I think we're talking about, the habitual offenders.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, unfinished business, um, second reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen fifty, that sale of Lockin Road, all the brown for five thousand dollars. You made it.
Um, Madam Mayor and Council, uh, I believe the council member asked to check on the wording of this ordinance to cover it in case, uh, any, anybody decided to close this road later. So we did add some language in there and all that.
Yes.
Could Audis, Susan B. Brown, LLC, their respective successors, the signs, and affiliates, felt that keep Lockin Road open for vehicular traffic and the road had free impediments, the ownership of Lockin Road revert to the city of Darlington?
It was about her death. She was dead, satisfied?
Well, I'd put in, after the road, um, free of impediments and maintain, then Locky, Lockin Road revert to the city of Darlington. I'd like to put the, the maintain the word in there, um, just to be sure that there is some maintenance going on. Kevin, have you had any conversation with it, one way or the other?
No, sir. Uh, we discussed the verdicts in there, that's been, still. My understanding is that they are, I'm sorry, ma'am, my understanding is that, that, that is their intention. I think that, but you managed to add it up. We can still go with the top.
No, sometimes there can be some problems once the event's happened, um, as we have experience with our corner store. Uh, if you could put some language in there, perhaps if you could figure out a way to, to do it with due process, something to the effect that they're not doing it, we give them notice if it's unresolved within thirty days, then for, for somebody can sign the deed.
Just steps, uh, I wish Walt would handle it.
Yeah. Just something where we can file it in the records to reflect that it's now our problem.
So I guess we're gonna tape it out until you get correct wording in there.
Do we need three readings on this, any of them?
Just two.
Two disposals of real property. Two. Can we get three readings?
So we're taping it out until we get correct wording with it, maintain it. Um, second reading of the order two thousand eighteen dash seventeen habitual offenders ordinance.
Again, spell.
I got any questions? Have you ever looked at it and explained it again, or?
Well, it was just said about the five hundred dollars, I guess it needs to be explained the second. Just getting that five hundred dollars.
Basically, I've said before, what we're, what we're targeting are people that own property around the city.
Right.
That are not maintaining. Um, I'm not looking at riding through neighborhoods, trying to find out who's had been cutting the grass and sent them a citation for five hundred dollars. This is for people that, we send them a letter at the beginning of the grass cutting season, they go out and they cut the grass, or they don't cut the grass. Um, if they do cut it, they wait on the city to tell them when to cut it again. It's not our responsibility to tell the people that own lots in the city when to cut the grass. It's their responsibility. They bought it, they need to maintain it. So that's just what this is for, to hold their people.
There's nothing to do with furniture, anything, just grass.
Just grass, maintaining the lots.
All right. Any other questions, discussion?
I think I've answered the question, but when we are-
Talk louder, um, please.
When we're, when we are telling someone that they are not in compliance with this chapter, that they're going to be a offender, a digital offender, do we adequately define what our, um, requirements are for yard maintenance?
Yes, sir. Every time we send a letter out, we send a copy of the ordinance along with it, so they know exactly what the ordinance states, and, you know, how high the grass can be and that kinda stuff. So they do know what they're supposed to do like that.
Any other discussion? Are you ready to go?
I make a motion, Madam Mayor, that we approve second reading of ordinance two twenty eighteen dash seventeen, the habitual offender ordinance relating to our overgrown, unkept properties. Second.
Any other discussion? It's the property rule, the second, that we, um, the ordinance two thousand eighteen seventeen habitual offenders ordinance, on the rate of the grass and the owners that goes out to, to, all in favor, you know, sign a I.
Aye.
Means have the same right, once you can.
Appreciate it.
New business.
I asked, I was on-
You can't, you're not on a agenda, sir, that's, you know, I'm sorry, I, you know, let me say something. We have an agenda. And then we have one, if you wish to speak for anything for five minutes. But otherwise, if we didn't have an agenda, we'd be here all night. Everybody was talking, I'm sorry about that. Um, remember, eight, new business, um, Old Florence Highway, baseball stuff, gonna be a snack survey, be a, to me?
Before we get started, Mayor, I just wanna thank, see it all, to the council, for, um, supporting the Southern Five Hundred Parade this past weekend. And I do appreciate you and Ms. Reed, um, representing City Council on the float. I hope you had a good time.
You did.
It was, it was, it was crazy, a little while there, but, um, we actually found out on Friday that we were gonna have a guest star there, and actually had Junior ride the NBC Sports float. So that was kind of a big deal, 'cause that's the first time he's ever done anything like that. So I just, um, wanted y'all to be aware of that, so. Um, here to talk tonight about the topical survey, got two, I had put out the bid, got two back. But before we get into that too, I want y'all to know that Mr. Bert Lynn, who is the designer for the fields, and, and has the pricing and stuff like that, and if you wanna talk about, or ask him any questions tonight, about any phase or doing a phase or anything like that, he's here to answer questions if you wanna do that. Um, but I got two, two bids for the, the survey. The first one is, um, somebody Bert recommended, uh, is, um, South Carolina Professional Land Surveyor, the, uh-
What's the name of the company?
Kickenwood. Kickenwood. They're South Carolina Professional Land Surveyor, out of, um, up near Rock Hill. And then, um, Mr. David Nesbit of Nesbit Surveying Company, right over in Tennesville. Y'all have a copy of those? Um, do they have a copy of those? Okay, I have, I have both of them right here, so, um, if you wanna make copies, you can. But I can tell you that the, um, the one for Kickenwood come in at eighty-five hundred dollars.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am. The one for Nesbit Survey, come in at forty-eight hundred dollars. Same stuff. Oh, and has a travel pretty good way, so he's gonna make copies of that for you, uh, while he's out doing that.
Introduce, um-
Come on up, Bert. This is Mr. Bert Lynn, he's actually from Darlington, now resides in Charlotte, North Carolina. Uh, but he's a, he's a hometown guy, and he's one that I've, I've leaned on as far as his know-how and stuff and ball fields. He's actually come down and took a look at the site, um-
Several sites.
Several, we, we looked at several sites together.
Son has gray hair, but has, left here.
No, but, um, and he, he's brought the plan tonight. If you wanna ask him any questions, I can show you this while, um, city manager's out doing that. I'll be the easel.
Yep, so, um, it is the Mayor and Council, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Just to speak a little bit on the, the final site that we've selected, it's a twenty-two acre site off Old Florence Highway. Uh, this plan, the, the goal of the plan was to see how we could maximize the use of the site that we have here and get as many ball fields there as possible. And so we went through several iterations. We finally landed on one that had, um, six, uh, two-hundred-and-ten football fields, one larger softball field, I think it's a three-hundred football field, um, with parking that would go along with that, uh, a building that would contain restrooms, concessions, and an umpire room, um, a play area, a walking trail, and potential, uh, maintenance area for the park itself. That are, that's kind of the amenities that will fit on the twenty-two acres that we have, and we still have plenty of room there to handle any stormwater or anything like that, that we need to. Um, but that was the, uh, the outcome of the plan.
Any questions? Lee mentioned something about phasing. If you were gonna try to do something in phases, what would you propose to be that which would be accomplished first, and, and the period of time perhaps between the different places?
So with any ball field that you build, you're gonna have to build parking and restrooms and sidewalks that you have accessible means to get from one place to another there. Um, when it comes down to budget, um, I think we're gonna have to make a decision on whether we want more ball fields, or if we want fewer ball fields with lights. Uh, in terms of programming, that's something that, that Lee and the department will have to kind of think through and determine, uh, if they wanna try to play everything during daylight on more fields. You can play six games at a time for Little League, or if you wanna be able to maximize, um, like we did back when I was growing up, um, and have, uh, an afternoon game and an evening game. Uh, lighting for ball fields is very expensive, it's really the most expensive thing, uh, that would be part of the park here.
And, and, and going on, staying on that topic there, as far as that goes, we could phase it out, you know, we can cut costs. It's projected at three and a half million. So we can cut the cost right now, Bert's got it worked out to where if we did, if we did four ball fields to start with, just first, do four ball fields, we can come in right now at one point five. That's with lights.
Would that include any, uh, restroom facilities or food service type thing?
Yeah, that would include the, the building that would have the concessions room, uh, the umpire room, the restrooms. Uh, it would include, I think we had thirty parking spaces per field, so that'd be a hundred and twenty spaces. At full build-out right now, we've got, shown on there, about two-hundred-and-four spaces. But we've got more room to expand if we wanted to park on grass or do overflow. That's something else we could do, we could, we could pave the core parking area, and then if we had more cars out there than we can handle, we could park those on the grass.
And so that one point five will cover just what you said just now, the ball fields and the restrooms and the pocket area?
Four ball fields.
Four ball fields.
Four ball fields.
Then you phase one, and then go and do the phase two later.
Right, and you could really do it in as many phases as you wanted to, you could just slowly kind of add to it as you need to.
But there are grants available, that's one good thing about being Little League. They must go lighting partners with them all the time. We can prob, we can, we can get discounts in that way. Uh, we're looking into Major League Baseball grants, uh, through Mr. Orlando Hudson. Uh, there's, there's a lot of irons in the fire right now, so to speak, as to, to try to get that money kicked up to where we don't have to phase it. But if we do have to phase it, then we just have to phase it, and then we, you know, it's on everybody's mind that that's what's gonna, that we're gonna have a ball field. Um, but I think now, do y'all got any more questions for Bert?
Does anybody else got a question? Thank you for that, Mr. Reed.
I think y'all have your information as far as the bids.
And this, this is-
One of them's forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred dollars for one from Nesbit's.
I know y'all going for that. You said forty-eight hundred dollars? Mm-hmm. I can't find your paper.
Yeah.
Forty-eight and eighty-four.
I see eighty-seven.
Yeah, I know that.
That's the first one, you said, it's an eighty-seven, that's a, that's a forty-eight seventy.
They only got the first.
I don't have the other one.
He's got it.
How many total parking places?
Two-hundred and four, about two-hundred and four.
What do we have currently, if you were estimating? I know we don't have parking places.
Something a little loud.
At, at Blue Street?
Yeah.
We don't have any, other than all, yeah, what we have as far as parking now, is just around the ball fields, you can figure about a hundred. Not counting the, the-
Tennis court side.
Tennis court side, where the ball field, where the, the high school lawn, and not counting the high school parking lot. So it would, it would, you know, if we, it would open up, that in itself would make it safer and, and just because you're not, if you out at Blue Street here in baseball, kids darting in and out of cars, um, we've closed the street off, we took, we've taken away parking out there just to keep it safe. So, I mean, it, that's a big deal, just, just the parking in general is a big deal.
So phase one, 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 five million dollars?
Totally.
And then include the field hall?
We did it all, it'd be three and a half, right at three and a half. That's, that's, Bert was being conservative too, so, oh, oh, a bit high, sorry. Uh, it could come in under that, but he's wanting to give us more.
Will this start out with golf fields and?
Well, we gonna try to raise money. We gonna try to get as much money as we can get, but that's what we have now, you know, we have until twenty-twenty to spend that money. Um, and I know that, you know, Siskron Street, we're supposed to close on it on Monday. Virgil Wells, which is, is, is looking very good, um, which by the way, September fifteenth, put it on your calendars right now, you're getting an invitation. That'll be opening day for, for football, everybody's invited. Um, we're gonna do a lot of cool stuff that day, we're gonna honor some people, we're gonna honor, um, try to honor Virgil, Coach Virgil Wells, um, and a couple of other things. So just put that on your calendar, September fifteenth, say ten o'clock in the morning.
What date is that?
Saturday.
Please notice that, here, not only a difference in price provision- Nesbit says surrounding roads, outfalls, existing structures, and fences.
It's a topographical survey. Do we need to, and I didn't, you know, I didn't even, I'm not the engineer, so I don't know if they're apples for apples or whatever. Bert, that might be a better question for him. But if we need to go back and give Kickenwood just a topographical survey, we can do that. Or I could tell Nesbit that they need to...
Nesbit says his is a topographical survey.
Yes.
I have a question for Bert. Do we need to do the in-depth work that Kickenwood suggested?
I would, because we're gonna need to know where the utilities are gonna be pulled from that are gonna service the new facility. So once we locate where the power's coming from, where the sanitary sewers coming from and the water, that'll help us get better, more accurate estimates as to how much it's actually gonna cost to do the project.
So tonight, this is just for discussion?
It could be just for discussion. I can take it back to you. Either Nesbit spoke his off or Kickenwood knocked theirs out.
Well, whatever Bert thinks we need, we need.
Okay. That's what we'll do, yeah.
But if Nesbit is not giving us the full features of his that we need, then we need to ask him for what his cost would be for that.
I'd definitely need to ask.
You have more discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Bert, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Be up on a new business check, right? D R T A? You see there? Oh, okay. You can see the screen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors, citizens and other guests here this evening. When I was before you, earlier this summer, to speak about the annual budget, as you know, some riders, I don't know if any came this evening or not, but we had some folks that found out that that was an agenda item and came to speak their support of the service. And I was quite surprised that several spoke that night, and each one of them, if I recall correctly, spoke about their appreciation for the service, but the fact that it doesn't run on Saturday. And they all desired to be able to have the same transportation mobility on Saturday to get around Darlington. There was some engagement from the city council, some questions were asked, and when I left with all of those riders, they approached me to say, you want us to get a petition? What does it take? And I said, if you want to get a petition going, that's fine, you go ahead. And honestly, and with all due respect, a month and a half later or so, I had totally forgotten about it, when the driver of our service has to come to our Florence facility on a weekly basis to exchange paperwork and what have you. And she sought me out and she said, oh, I have your survey for you. And I said, survey? And she said, I mean petition. And she presented to me a petition, which I made copies of, and shared this news with Mr. Garland, and he suggested if you want, you can appear before council, and we share this information with the council and provide if there are, if there is any interest in pursuing this, what would it take, what would entail. And so I just wanted to take a minute to share a copy of the petition that we received with each of you. And before I get into that, I also want to take advantage of being before you to just report on some good news, and that is our fiscal year, which is in line with the cities. We completed our year in June thirtieth, and the trip activity on the Dart Service here in Darlington increased by over ten percent from about sixty-nine hundred trips the previous year to over seven thousand six hundred trips this past year. And I can't explain it, but just in July, the first month of the new year that just ended, in the most recent information we had, it went from about five hundred trips in July of 2017 to this July, over seven hundred and fifty. That's over a fifty percent spike. Please don't ask me to explain what's going on, because I'm not sure myself, but clearly that in concert with the fact that several of the riders came before you a few months ago, and you're seeing the list of folks, I would be the first to admit that not all of those names, I expect to be riding the bus all the time, but several of them do, and evidently that's a list of people that wanted to see if Saturday service could be provided in Darlington. And so back to that point, as I believe I shared when I was here to a question or two that was posed that evening, to operate four hours of service on Saturday in Darlington, and that would be the existing bus route in schedule, it's an hour route throughout town, hitting all the destinations that folks need to get to, that for a week, I'm sorry, for once a week for an entire year, we would need, and I know all of you understand the federal and the state funding that P D R T A is able to access, to leverage those funds, we would need about twenty-eight hundred dollars on the local level to provide four hours of service every Saturday for an entire year. I would further make that even more enticing by suggesting that it's now September. We're already three months into the fiscal year, so that if you were to consider trying this service, at least may I suggest on a pilot basis, by the time that that would be approved and we would actually get it up and running, there may be eight or perhaps seven months less in the year, you're gonna, you know, accordingly reduce that twenty-eight hundred by whatever the percentage of the number would be depending on when we'd start service. And you could see how that would go for the remainder of the year through next June. I would caution that we typically see a slight drop in activity during the winter months when the temperature's a little colder and people aren't as anxious to get outside and get around town. But over the course of the year, given the annual ridership growth I've been sharing with you, that should be something that we'll continue to try and favor. So with all that being said, I'm simply reporting to you on the update and the information that I shared with the petition that the riders generated on their own behalf, and wanted to come before you and share this update on the status of execution.
Yes, ma'am. This morning, I was coming to work for the city building, and there's a young lady outside. She said, hey, I haven't seen you in a long time. I said, haven't seen you either. And I said, where's your bicycle? She said, I don't ride the bicycle, but I ride the bus. I thought that was great. She's been riding the bicycle for years, up and down, maybe all around town, but she was very excited that she rides the bus now.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that. And she should know that she can put her bike on the bus so that she can do both if she wanted to. We have several people that do that. They'll ride the bike to the bus stop, and there's a bike rack in every bus we have.
Oh, okay.
Take it off when they get to the destination and continue on.
Well, congratulate you. I know we went to D R T A earlier today. You are leaving March first, 2019. You're retiring, but I know you got this sit home, and you know, hopefully we get someone else as great as you are.
Oh, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I wish I were ten years younger, so I wouldn't have to be facing those kinds of decisions. But, you know, if not for that, I enjoy what I do. I'm proud that, you know, so many stakeholders in the community can make this kind of service, be effective and efficient, and connect the residents in your community with places to get to that they otherwise not be able to get to. And even beyond that, as we all know, and as you've heard me speak every year, it is economic development, because the folks using the bus are going to spend money, to earn money, you know, and if they can't get to those destinations, that economic activity is reduced by that extent. So it's really an investment that has great returns on it, year in, year out. And I appreciate the support of the city and the other stakeholders in the community to make it happen.
Jim, what time would this bus run on Saturday?
It would be Darlington. It would be the existing bus route that we run Monday through Friday in Darlington. It does not run on weekends, never really did. And so the information I'm sharing tonight would be a scenario of running it for four hours on Saturday alone for an entire year.
What's the time for it?
What time is it?
What's the four hours?
What would be the four hours? You know, I would hesitate to try to answer that, because I would want to get the input of the riders, and before I would say, here's when the bus is going to run, we would need to do some public outreach and find out what would work best for the largest number of people that really would like to use it and to try to fit their needs. So, you know, it could be a number of different possible scenarios, but I'll hesitate to suggest any.
Do you think between now and the next council meeting, you could sort of get a feel for what that proposed schedule would be?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to.
Mayor, we perhaps just, we will have our information by next council meeting. Can we just put it on the agenda, ask Mr. Garland to see what funding sources might be available?
Does that mean I get to come back?
Yes.
I enjoy coming before you, and I appreciate your help and all of the good work you do.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
See you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, number C, first reading on the order 2018 dash sixteen regulation for small wireless facility.
Yes, ma'am, I can take that. Council members had expressed their concern on page six with the FOIA request under permit applications to receive. And so we changed that with some input from the municipal association. So it reads now, if the freedom of information app FOIA requests made by citizens or industry party in the city of Darlington denies any such request, the company claims for a higher carrier confidential information, shall pay all legal fees arising from any FOIA lawsuits. So whoever that company is, they would have to eat those fees. Also, the other concern was about the actual cost for the small wireless facilities. That's on page fifteen. We checked with some other towns. It was fifty dollars per wooden pole and two hundred dollars for any other poles. After checking with some other communities, we adjusted that to read a hundred dollars per year for a wooden pole or two hundred and fifty dollars per year for all other city owned poles. And just a reminder, we're not a electric city, so our income for this is not gonna be great. If we had every pole that we own rented out, it'd be about four thousand dollars a year.
Is there a variable there?
Yeah.
Page fifteen.
I guess my finger's not there. My nose is not there. Okay, I guess it's fifty here. I guess it's fifty here, okay. That's three. That's up five, okay. Let's see, my nose is not good on mine.
Those are the concerns of the board from last week.
Any questions? Make a step.
Careful. This pertains to city owned poles. What about poles may be, you can be... We wouldn't get any fees from them, but this still regulates them. So that, the section we just talked about, it doesn't apply. But if any company coming in and making improvements on any new energy utility owned poles, they have to comply with the requirements. And I saw one of these, this small wireless facilities in Florence a few weeks ago, before the parking lot in Ollies, they have a light that's there, and on top of that, they've got a small wireless facility. You can see it, it's about fifteen feet tall. And a reminder, council, that this is for promoting better wireless coverage in underserved areas, in neighborhoods that don't have a good signal. So we have some parts of town that may, you know, certainly would meet that criteria. And Verizon came in three years ago and did a study, and they said they would come back in three to five years and start implementing some of that new technology. But we haven't heard that they can make any fees, that they can do the same thing.
So we have Verizon's grant and eighteen T F, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? First reading?
I'll mention that we approved the first reading ordinance, 2018 dash sixteen dash regulation for small wireless facilities.
I'll second. Any other questions? It's been probably moved to separate that we received the first reading, the orders 2018 sixteen regulation for small wireless facilities, all in favor vote? Ladies have a saying right? Motion carriers? F C L I A grant application for Joe Lewis station?
Madam Mayor and Council, at the recent South Carolina Municipal Association meeting in Florence, there's representatives from PD council of governments that approached me after the meeting. Her name is Lindsay Privet, and she said that there was E D A money available in communities who were under distress from the recent hurricanes of the last few years. I followed up on this by talking with the person that writes those grants for the PD co, and that's Clay Young, and he said indeed that money was available and that there were certain stipulations to go along with it. He suggested I talk with Robin Cooley, who is the state E D A director, which he did. She said that a hundred and forty-seven million dollars is available in the Southeastern United States. E D A money is usually tied to job creation, but this money is not, and the grant is an eight-twenty match. There's no limit as to what you can apply for. Robin Cooley said that we needed to get an application in by the middle of October, and I ran by her some of the ideas that we had talked about of including the Joe Lewis pump station, also the Altel Verizon pump station, the Outstream pump station, the Brokeville pump station, and the main pump station. She said those all sounded good to her. She's available to come in and look onsite at what we are proposing. As it stands right now, we'd rather put, it's staff recommendation, we put in for the E D A grant instead of applying for REA, just because there's a larger pot of money available with the E D A grant. And again, the C D A money does not come along very often with it not being tied directly to economic development or job creation. It's a great opportunity to update these five pump stations, which are along the corner where we have our most great, most and greatest growth for the city of Darlington. So at this time, I would ask that we suspend our REA application for the Joe Lewis lift station.
Mr. Garland, I would say why we can't do both? I mean, you know, doing the grant free, I mean, we can get that one and still do the E D A grant.
From my understanding, I have, and I don't have this on a piece of paper, you can apply for two different grants with the same factor.
Okay, so you said that we can get as much as we want. It's a hundred and forty-seven million dollars, but that's for South Carolina.
That's for the southeast.
Southeast. But how much can we apply for? Do you know that?
There's no limit on what we can apply for.
There's no limit on what we can apply for.
That's correct.
And it's an eight-to-twenty match?
That's correct.
We pay the twenty?
Yes, ma'am.
And then give up eighty percent?
The eighty percent they provide, yes.
They provide eighty percent. I also had a conversation with Mr. Clay Young today, myself, and I asked him several questions about this grant. And what he said to me was, the grant can be written for within a business area, but it has to be, if there's more than one thing that would include it in the grant, all of those stations have to be tied together. It can't be separate stations that's not tied together. So in Darlington, I was asking him, well, the lift station on Joe Lewis and the lift station at Verizon would be, could that be considered tied together? He said to me he wasn't sure, because Verizon is out in the business district. If he uses the Joe Lewis, but he's not sure whether Joe Lewis would be included in that or not, he would have to research it and get back to me. And he said, as far as Outstream is concerned, it's not tied to Joe Lewis or Verizon. So he can't tie those in together. So I don't know how, I mean, maybe we're getting different conversations, but that's what I was told. He also said to me that the maximum was too big. That's what he told me today when I spoke with him, and I spoke with Lindsay. Yeah. I spoke with her first, and then he came in and I spoke with him about it, to try to get an understanding of what we needed to do, basically for Joe Lewis, because that lift station is having so many problems. But from what I'm understanding, and he said to me that it was based all around that Irma stall. So in Darlington, I was asking him, well, the lift station on Joe Lewis and the lift station at Verizon would be, could that be considered tied together? He said to me he wasn't sure because Verizon is, is out in the business district. If he's into Joe Lewis, but he's not sure whether Joe Lewis would be included in that or not, he would have to research it and get back to me. And he said as far as Allen Street is concerned, it's not tied to Joe Lewis or Verizon. So he can't tie those in together. So I don't know how, I mean, maybe we're getting different conversations, but that's what I was telling. He also said to me that the maximum was too big. That's what he told me today when I talked, I spoke with him and I spoke with Lindsay. Yeah. I spoke with her first, and then he came in and I spoke with him about it to try to get an understanding of what we needed to do basically for Joe Lewis because that lift station is having so many problems. But from what I'm understanding, and he said to me that it was based all around that Irma storm, but they opened it up differently for the hundred forty-seven million. That's including Georgia, Florida, and South Carolina that's applying for this grant. So, and he's questioning, because he said he can get back to me about Joe Lewis because he's not sure whether that would include Joe Lewis. Okay, so you getting different information for what? I spoke to him.
I asked, general parameter, doesn't ask any specifics. I haven't even put all the grant numbers together yet as to what calls will be specifically. I talked with Mr. Young once in person, twice on phone about this.
You know, Ms. Reed? I just simply want to say, you are, we were at our last council meeting, we were very, y'all were very emphatic about making sure that Davidson Brown does this REA grant. So let's start with that. Why are we even considering that? Because if Allen Street is not included with Joe Lewis, then we still, of what I'm understanding, can still apply for the E D A or Allen Street. So it would, we are not out of the thing. I just said, we need to, you know, do what we said. It was a lot of discussion about the REA grant. Let them do it, I mean, suspend that. I mean, that's what you wanted. You wanted them to get that done, and it's needed to be done now.
Like based on what Mr. Garland's recommendations were, this is something new that we didn't have last month when we were voting on the REA grant. There's more money in this pot than we may be able to get over two rather than what the REA grants going forward. I think we need to go with Mr. Garland's recommendation. Let him bring that person over here, and then he can get those specific questions answered. We can see what we can tie together, what we can't tie together, and how much money we can apply for.
Sounds real good. My point is, right now, we understand that Joe Lewis Boulevard is in critical state. That was the whole point about that. And that the people in that area, that while we are, you know, negotiating about money and who do what, our, the folk over there in that area are really suffering. Now, I don't know, but I know this was a direct result of that station and that family down on Howard, Howard Street where the raw sewage was in the yard. I know it, part of it was them, but it was about that. We need to do something about that. And if we still can't get the money for, it is clear that Allen Street is not a part, it can't be tied to Joe Lewis. So it's clear that is. So we would, I mean, that's what being safe. I don't think that there's no misunderstanding about that. So the money that we would, if we would suspend that thinking that we can get both stations done under the E D A is not correct. We know that's not right. Yeah, no, that's what the gentleman just said. That that's what Councilman Backus got, that Allen Street was not tied into Joe Lewis. That's all.
What I want to say is that, first I want to address Councilman Reed comment that y'all voted for Davidson Brown to get the REA grant. Councilman Seager already said what I was gonna say. That vote was taken prior to any knowledge of an E D A grant. From my understanding, prior to the information that Councilwoman Backus shared tonight, the E D A grant is a grant where we have an opportunity to get more money and do more within the city of Darlington as it pertains to our lift station. Not anything where it's got to be tied to another lift station. But that was, okay, let me finish. Okay? So that was the information that was shared first. So that's why the consideration for the E D A grant was given prior to this information that she gave tonight. So it sounds like to me, we don't have all the information that we need because we got a story here and we have a story back from the city manager. There's someone who said that would come and discuss this with us and give us the right information.
That would be the state E D A director.
Okay. And that person is willing to come and give us this information? Mr. Garland?
Yes, ma'am.
Where can he come?
She. I have to call an expert.
Well, we need that information, so. Well, so, I just can't, I just don't know voting on something that we've got different stories. Even some of your information that you shared, Councilwoman Backus, was not definite as to whether or not these things can or can't be done. So I think we need definite answers, correct information, and then make decisions and votes based on that.
I also want to comment, I was at the same meeting where this information was given. Of course, we all perked up. E D A, all this money available as a result of the storm damage, I mean, as the hurricane damage, yeah, we all was asking questions. So, but it was, it was clear that we can. The only point I'm making is that we need, we've already voted on getting the grant for to do Joe Lewis, which is absolutely unnecessary. I mean, whatever it takes to get that, whatever monies it is that we are going to be able to do that with it. And that, why don't we go ahead while we are researching what E D A does? Don't stop that because it is needed. I don't understand that part.
I don't understand. Mr. Garland, can you say something?
I want to ask Mr. Kinsall, but, Mr. Kinsall, are the Joe Lewis, Altel, Grove Hill, and main pump stations all tied together?
Yes, Altel feeds to Joe Lewis. Joe Lewis feeds into Grove Park and Oak Tree. Only one that's not in this group is Allen Street.
So you take Allen Street out?
Take Allen Street out, the other four are together.
There's still probably more than a million two hundred three thousand dollars you can put in for with E D A. And they won't, applications in their office by middle of October? So if those other, if those other four tie in at Allen doesn't, let's move ahead with the four.
And that would include, you said Joe Lewis and-
Yeah, that would be everything but Allen.
Yeah, everything but Allen.
So let me ask, so with the REA grant, what was the maximum they could apply for? Was it a million dollars?
Two point. The original money that we put in, the estimate for Davidson Brown was four hundred thousand dollars just for Joe Lewis lift station and for Altel pump station.
Okay, so what was the maximum they could put in for the REA grant? It's a million dollars, right?
A million dollars, yes, ma'am.
So, I understand, but what if you do both of them, or you can put it in and then do it for free? I don't understand why you're not going ahead and putting it for it. There's no guarantee you're going to get neither one. Let's see. What's the story? Let's see them.
The question here is, the REA grant, it's not going to be enough money to do. Joe Lewis has got a big price tag on it. Now we're going after a bigger pot of money that we can get more stuff done, so let's forego the REA grant for Joe Lewis and just try to get these other lift stations in on the same ticket.
And if you can only get two million dollars, and you're talking four lift stations, that's not going to solve Joe Lewis' problem. So you make it sound like it is, but it's not going to solve Joe Lewis' problem. And the main thing we was addressing from day one was Joe Lewis lift station. And the problem, that's his South Dolphins with that lift station. And as more businesses come on that bypass, the lift station is getting more and more wear and tear, and it's going to get worse. How many businesses have Joe Lewis Boulevard?
About eight hundred jobs on the bypass, but we also have the capability to send sewer to Florence with the E D A grant, which we got in 2014. So if we do have a problem, we can just send it to Florence because we have that line of laws. I still think it's a sound policy to move forward with E D A application minus the Allen Street pump station, including Joe Lewis, Altel, Verizon, Grove Hill, and the main pump station.
Just a question, do we run into a problem with the E D A grant on things being tied together? If we have attempted to remedy one of the lift stations, that would be a part of the package? Do they come back and say, you don't need this grant money from E D A because you fixed one of the, one of the four? Or do they care one way or the other?
Sir, we got a successful E D A grant in 2011, which was one point eight million dollars for some of the same issues that you're talking about now, which included upgrading sewer service, industrial sewer service in Georgia Pacific, and for Palm Quest, and for New Core Steel Mill. And so all those were done with the idea that they all tie in and go to one place.
My question was really more on the order of if you do Joe Lewis as a separate item, will that negatively affect our grant application for E D A?
If you don't include, if you don't include it with E D A, yes, it would. It would be hard to do the E D A application without Joe Lewis in it because it's the middle of everything.
So why not just Allen Street? Okay, you keep, just in that. I know that it's war two, and I'm always the last one to get it, but I'm, I mean, the E D A could be specifically for that. I don't understand.
Oh.
I understand, but, okay, prior to this-
Why not Allen Street with REA? That's the way it goes.
And why not, that's the same thing I'm saying now. Prior to this, what would we, what would, if we just voted on something to do with Verizon, if we just do that?
I, may I say something? Something the Red Bull was calling yesterday. He said, why not do Allen Street with the REA grant? Because I thought, we were told that the REA grant, REA grant had to be tied to a business. That's not a business, that's a community that I know Allen Street. So how can we do the REA grant, what you said?
But you can't do, you can't do an E D A because it ties with the other, she's asking you to do the E D A.
But we were talking about the REA grant. We discussed that. The REA grant was for business in it because Joe's Boulevard is in a residential area, but it ties into some of the businesses I don't think it do. That's why we could tie that in. But you could not tie Allen Street in. So now you're saying now, why not do the REA grant with the Allen Street? That's not possible for what you're doing.
Yes, it is if you wait till March to do Allen Street with the REA grant. Because the stormwater grant will be closed out then, which is open REA grant, and we'll be able to go and apply for that Allen Street station.
Oh, boy. Coming in different. Well, it takes too much information.
Like I said before, we don't even know whether Joe Lewis qualified or not because he says he had checked to see whether it would qualify. So he's not even sure whether it will or will not. But I don't think we have any individuals up here, so I think we need to get them in so we can work it out. Because that's got mixed information in that thing like that.
It seems like your worry was with the stations connecting and being able to go after them all. Only if they do connect. Our head of our water and sewer department has said that they all connect minus the Allen Street lift station. So it seems like we can go after four out of five, or get four out of five lift stations upgraded and brought back to standard, not thirty years old like some of our other ones. And I understand your worry of your ward and the Joe Lewis lift station, but when we find out about more money, we can change not just one lift station, but four throughout the whole city. And it seems like that's the smarter choice for the council.
It would if I had to see kind of what y'all did last time. You wanted it free.
That was before, that was long ago.
The same, the same process, the same. I'm on it.
Your argument is-
It's not an argument, I'm on this side.
But I mean, the point that you're making.
The point I-
And we know about, I can only speak for myself.
Yes.
Can I tell you about the information of the E D A grant? Then the REA grant, would it have been a discussion? If we could take, apply for an E D A grant and take care of more lift stations in the city versus one or two, then I think that's a win for Darlington.
Hands down, it would be. But see, what I'm saying is that we coming into it, hands down, that would be, if it would come.
We just sit here all night and discuss that, but it has already been established that we got some mixed up information. We need to get that clear first before we can go on.
I think we have the mixed up information clarified when the water department head said that we can tie all those together because they are tied together.
Okay, but he doesn't know anything about the grant.
No.
As far as this, this, the man said the maximum. Whoever giving the grant, whoever get the grant from, we need to get from him.
Uh, go ahead, John.
I'd like to make a motion that we instruct the city manager to pursue getting that person over here to look at what we've got, what we can tie together, and what grants we can apply for, and just move forward.
Sir, I think so. I wish you would make that.
More discussions, a proper move. Secondly, we get something in here to tell us the correct information about the S C R I A grant applications, Joe's lift station. E D A, E D A, that's what E D A, I'm sorry, E D A.
Are we dealing right now with item D or are we dealing with item E?
Well, I thought we were dealing with these deals. But then it came up about the E D A.
I amend my motion. If we, we forego the REA grant that we voted on last month, and just pursue this E D A grant.
I'll second that.
So, okay. And I'm kind of with you, but I want to get this clear. If we forego that, that's me putting that aside, that we're going to start all over. It's like our bid process all over.
It would have to be.
Okay. But then I'm with that. If we just, I'm with that. Let's just do that. And we have to follow all our policy procedures with human events and all that kind of just go.
Well, I have a question. Well, after that. Okay. But I should, I'm saying, I amend that again. Let's see.
My motion was to instruct the city manager to pursue the E D A grant, trying to tie four lift stations together, and we will vote down the REA grant that we approved last month.
With new, with new means.
Withdraw that grant.
I'll second that.
It's a proper move. Secondly, we will do the S C R I A grant application, tying in all four lift stations.
I got some information before you vote. This is according to Mr. Young. Since the no grant writing fee and the flat administrative fee of twenty-five thousand dollars, we wouldn't fit out the engineering. I wanted that to be noted before y'all voted on.
Okay, Carl would write the grant, and we would have to bid out the engineering.
And they would administer the grant for twenty-five thousand.
And they would administer, Carl would administer the grant. Okay. So I'm going to make that motion.
So I understand the motion that we're directing the city manager to withdraw any application of any that has been submitted for the REA grant, and that we go forward with the E D A grant to try and get funding for four lift stations. Correct, Mrs. Seager?
We have to bid the engineering part out. Please don't leave that out. Well, we just, can I give a second?
I'm supposing so.
It's my problem with, we will go with the E D A grant, leave the REA grant out, and for both lift stations, the Carl writing the grant and administering the grant, and that we would bid out for engineer. All in favor? Ladies have a saying right? Motion carries? I have a question. So, Mr. Garland, if by chance they don't get this grant, so you, from what I'm understanding, you said we have to wait until March to reapply for another grant for Joe Lewis?
Or Allen Street. If, 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 depends on which way you'll go, if we don't get the E D A grant. If, if we don't get the EDA grant. But if we do, then you have the luxury of applying for Allen Street if you want, so we.
Okay, so what we just did, we were talking about the EDA grant application for sewer station, and I understand, right? Okay, so we going now to number F, discussion and vote council, minutes for July the fifth, two thousand eleven. Can I get a motion for that?
I don't, I don't have to study for that.
It's, it's, oh, long hours, okay, aside discussion, let's discuss that. But what is the problem? Do we have a conbee of those?
I, I'm not ready at this time to discuss that because we just got some information from attorney about a legal ruling, which we haven't really had time to pull this over yet.
So we have to be table that?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, Mr. Garland said that he got some information about that, so we need to table that one. Okay, and now I'm receiving information department reports, ten executive session outside of the. While he's doing that, I go back to Councilwoman Cal before it comes. Tuesday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, six P M, city council work session. Tuesday, October the second, two thousand eighteen, six thirty, regular monthly meeting, Darlington City Council. Now I go back to number eleven, Councilwoman Cal. We'll be going to the second session.
I, I have, I have a comment. Why is that done, I'd like to read it.
Okay.
Stay there, so my force of carry. My fellow council members, mayor, and the citizens of Darlington, it has always been, and will continue to be, my intent to do what I believe is best for the city of Darlington. I will continue to review information, ask questions, research, and make my decision carefully after doing such. In the last several weeks, there has been false accusations made against me by both citizens and sadly, some members of council. Tonight, I stand before you to set the record straight. After the vote on August fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, of forty-three, to award Davidson Brown the real grant, I was approached in a very aggressive way by someone who questioned my vote and basically expressed her total disappointment. I respectfully said to this person to have a good evening, and as I walked away, she yelled to me, "Oh, I will be calling you." Also, someone who is not a citizen of Darlington took to Facebook and accused me of voting against a black female-owned engineering firm and being paid off. Let me set the record straight. Latham Consultant LLC is not a black female-owned engineering firm, and nor is Latham Consultant LLC licensed to perform any engineering projects in the city of Darlington. It is just what it says, a consultant firm. As I stated earlier, I take my role as mayor pro tempore very seriously, and I am not bought nor paid for by anyone. No consultant firm or engineering firm helped finance my campaign, nor have given me any monetary gifts thereafter. Therefore, my vote is not obligated to anyone other than you, the citizens of Darlington. Once again, my intent and focus is always and will be what I believe is best for the entire city of Darlington. I know that people post a lot of things on Facebook, and as an elected official, I know that I'm subject to criticism. However, this letter is written to ensure that the citizens of Darlington know the truth. The most disappointing thing about this person's post is that it was shared by two of my fellow council members on their Facebook page. I questioned their intent as to why would two people that I serve with would be, would be willing to post false accusations about another council member on their Facebook page? I'm only left to believe that by sharing the post, my fellow council members endorsed these false accusations, the lies. In the past week, I offered my assistance to a fellow council member concerning sewer backup in some of the citizens' yards. I asked to be provided with the addresses so that I can assist in getting this matter fixed. I wanted this council member to know that I share in their concerns and that no one should have to live with those conditions, regardless of where they reside in the city of Darlington. My fellow council member responded to me and stated that I don't care about South Darlington. As of today, I have not been provided any addresses. Once again, let me set the record straight. This false accusation is so far from the truth. Not only do I care about South Darlington, I live in South Darlington. My parents live in South Darlington. I listened to and heard the concerns of the citizens in war two. I heard their voices when they expressed their health concerns, how they couldn't sit on their front porch without having to intake the fire odor coming from the ditch. That is why I voted to award Latham Consultant Firm the Southwest Darlington Storm Grant. Not only do I care about South Darlington, I care about all of Darlington. In conclusion, my fellow council members, mayor, and the citizens of Darlington, please rest assured that no matter the character attacks and the false accusations, I will continue to do what I believe is best for the city of Darlington. You, the citizens, voted and entrusted me with this position. I owe it to you to do what is right and to also speak the truth. I hope that as a council, we will be able to bridge this gap of divisionists, draw strength from each other's differences, and work together for a better Darlington. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor, on the council comments, I know you outlined the reminders, but we also look like we see the letter from Mr. Todd Parry about a trip to Sumter that would take place on September the twenty-sixth at ten A M. For those who are available to go over and listen to some of the steps that Sumter has taken towards revitalizing its downtown area.
Everybody got you now? That's September twenty-sixth.
Twenty-first.
What day is that on?
I simply wanted to say that was very good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Lee. For clearing that off, you know, I've always, as well as private person and public, I've always supported, I respect it, how I vote. I'm very vocal and animated about my positions, but never have I tried to demean of or attack you. Anyone about that. You hear whatever I say up here, that's all it is. I want you to hear whatever differences that we may have and how we feel about the issues we stand as a, a full council. And that's it. And I'm sorry that you, these things happened to you because I'm not there, I'm gonna lift you up, glad to know you're still here. And that didn't make a difference as to what you were going to do at your performance on council, and just thank you for that. You know, I don't go on Facebook, so I didn't know all that was going on.
Hey, thank you.
All right.
We need to take a five minutes break, we're going to the second session. Mayor, you have a vote, will come out?
I just wanna say one thing in reference to that. The matter, the truth will be the truth, truth will be known. So, that's all I'm saying about that.
Amen. I will.
You have to be there, because we're gonna have to take a five minute break, the restroom.
I like the motion that we go into the second session, discuss the lease program, chief, please.
Can, can, can I get a second?
Six.
You can probably put your second in favor?
Okay, it's okay, we can step outside for me.
Yeah, we can step outside anyway.
Yeah, you can.